Increase their cap of purchase to 15 million gallons a month. So it's under the same terms. It's a risk remaining that contract at the same rates and everything. So I need a motion to approve an amendment to the City of Bloomfield Water Contract of the City going from a cap of 3 million gallons per month to 15 million gallons per month.
Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize you to sign whatever documents are necessary so we can make an addendum to the water purchase contract for City of Bloomfield.
Okay, we have a motion for the addendum to the City of Bloomfield contract, Dr. Second. Second, the Council of Republicans. Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Speaker, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. The correspondence, it's that time of year where we get a lot of requests for fireworks sales and they have to have a special permit to do so. It has to be for charitable operations. The first one's from the New Hope Food Bank. I don't know, I'll take these individually, there's three of them for fireworks.
I don't have a problem doing a summary.
Okay, we have some of the first ones from the New Hope Food Bank. And then the second one is from the Butter Melk Days Foundation. And the third one is from the Bloomfield Church of God. You can see the locations here in Barstown, I think was at the Russell Beer Bank. Shopping Center, the other one Walmart, and I think the other one is at Barstown Surplus. I think that's the New Hope, New Hope Road, Barstown, or the old Southern States property. That's where the three locations will be at this time for these three. So I have a motion then to approve the three requests for fireworks sales from New Hope Food Bank, Butter Melk Days Foundation, and Bloomfield Church of God.
So moved.
And a motion by Councilman Williams, Dr. Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Douglas. Any discussion?
I'd like to abstain from all the Butter Melk Days Foundation requests.
Do you want to abstain from all of them or just?
No, just that one.
So we're gonna take a listen.
Yeah, if Councilman.
Well, we'll remove the Butter Melk Foundation fireworks request from my motion.
Okay, so we're just doing New Hope Food Bank and then Bloomfield Church of God under this first motion.
And Councilman Douglas, I assumed you would accept that amendment?
I would accept that amendment, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, the Second. Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Speaker, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now we're gonna do the request by Butter Melk Days Foundation for fireworks sales permit. We have a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Buckland, Dr. Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kelly. Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Speaker, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That's what I'm like to abstain of.
Okay. If the record shows that Councilman Sheckels is staying or accusing himself. All right, then the third request is a request for sponsorship for the Nelson County Community Clinic from Councilman Sheckels. Would you like to?
Yes, on behalf of Paul LaTravers, who's Executive Director of the Nelson County Community Clinic. They are having their 5K race that they are annually due each year. And they've requested that the council, if they could, be a silver sponsor in that event. The community clinic does a lot of good things for the for the community and citizens of Barstown. I think we probably have enough money in the council's contingency fund if the council some choose to support this endeavor.
I see if I said that we had some bad money available for the contingency fund.
I'm here.
We do have a city?
Yeah.
Before I did that.
So if that that'd be the case, I'd like to make a motion to recommend that we have become a silver sponsor for the community clinic in this 5K race.
Could you throw me the answer?
500.
You have to come out of the council's contingency fund.
They will come out of the council's contingency fund, yes.
And we have a motion then by Councilman Sheckels, Dr. Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hope Food. Any discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to note that, you know, we've some criteria that we adopted as a council, the prior council. And this endeavor here provides community care, which is a legitimate government activity purpose, so it would meet that criteria.
Thank you.
I think that was in the donation, the actual donation request.
Yes, they provided extensive documentation or background for that, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor, Mr. Speaker, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, then we have minutes of regular meeting and a working session, regular meeting for April the 25th.
Want to take them both up?
Can you?
On the May 2nd, I got a few minor changes on page one under Council Investigation. Second line, it says, it starts with this investigation, should be this investigation is straightened out that was, and insert or. Then there's the word discovered, and I want to strike out during the and add in at any.
On page two?
Yes.
What page?
Page one, under Council Investigation. I went back and double-checked the Gazette table, too.
Second, the second line is where that was, and so you changed the or. And what else?
And then after the word discovered, I want to strike during the and add in the two words at any. And then we go to the second paragraph, that second line says the same thing and it would have the same corrections. Basically, I read that, I think, under one of some of the potential actions that was in the report.
Correct.
All right, that's all I have.
The first, April 25th one was okay.
Yeah, April 25th was okay, so I'll go ahead and make the motion. We have the regular council meeting minutes of April 25th, 2017, and the working session minutes of May 2nd, 2017, as amended.
Oh, seconded. Okay, we have a motion, the Second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected? Mr. Speaker, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Under financial report, we really don't have a report, I'll just report Tracy and I are working on the budget this week. We got something yesterday on it, we'll work some more. Hopefully, we'll get it to you guys by the end of maybe next week. Hopefully, we gotta get some of the department heads with some questions, so. It's a working process, it just got a little over a week ago. My plate's pretty full, so I'm working to get it done. But we'd like to have it in pretty good shape. Get it to the council. And then we'll probably gonna have a finance committee meeting when Daniel Jeffries gets the bids on some of the work that needs to be done on the pool and some of those other things, and these things that's coming.
Greg's opening bids on May 16th for the HVAC for the COVID building.
Right. So those of you who were at our finance committee meeting last time, there was quite a bit of work that was gonna be bid out for the Rec Department, and those bids will be open, I think, on the 16th, and then we'll have the finance committee to meet on that and then make a recommendation to the council for approval of those bills. I think it's pretty major stuff that we gotta do on the pool and so forth, so we may be calling a meeting here next week sometime when that possible. All right. Under ordinances, we have an amendment to our budget. Tracy's have a memo attached, but basically this is to amend the budget to take care of the expenses of the investigation and also some other attorney expenses to ongoing legal actions that the city's having to respond to in relation to lawsuit from former marijuana, which included Tim Butter's, some expenses for Tim Butter, and then our attorneys representing us, Bruce Reynolds. I think it was $72,000 or what was it, $8,000?
On the 2. And I can read it, because I think somebody needs to introduce the.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is somebody gonna introduce?
Yeah, we need to introduce, I guess, the, then the B 2017-FY 2016-17 budget amendment.
Mayor, if I may be in order, I'd like to introduce the ordinance number B 2017, the budget amendment for the fiscal year 2016-17, and let the summary be read by our city attorney.
Ordinance number B 2017, budget amendment for FY 2016-17, an ordinance amending and adopted as amended, ordinance number B 2017-06, the City of Barstown's budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, whereas an annual budget for fiscal year 2016-17 was adopted by the City Council of the City of Barstown on June 28th, 2016, B 2016-06, and amended on March 14th, 2017, B 2017-06. And whereas there have been additional unanticipated changes in expenditure since March of 2017, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Barstown, Kentucky, that section one, the annual budget for the fiscal year 2016-17 is hereby amended as follows. One, general fund, increased authorized expenditures from $8,609,266 to $8,692,260.
91.
Excuse me, 8,691,266. Section two, that the annual budget is hereby amended and attached here to reflecting the above referenced amendment to the general fund expenditures that comprise FY 2016-17 budget for the City of Barstown. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following the publication as required by law.
I have a recommendation to amend the budget, so. If you're into this, is there any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Speaker, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Then we'll have second reading next meeting.
Oh, that's right. We don't have any minutes with our reports, but I don't know if anyone from the staff or council wants to report on it. We had Water and Waste Water Committee meeting on May 1st on the street. It's always a committee on May the 3rd. We want to get a report out on all of those. Wait till we get the minutes.
On the wastewater committee, we, I'll wait till we get the minutes, I'll put it back over to you next week, next meeting.
Let's do the same on the street, so I waste that. Actually brought the wrong folder, I thought.
All right, we should add those in next meeting or so. Okay, Chief Hero, you're up. You gotta announce what to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to announce that the Barstown Police Department is going to be hosting law enforcement officers' response to resistance and decision-making training here in Barstown at the police department from May 17th through June 12th. This is a video-based computer program that we'll be using. It puts the scenarios on the screen. The officers come in, they respond to it at certain levels. I'll hand you the press release, you can read up on it. What I'd like to do is invite you to come watch. Anytime, give us a call, come watch the officers going through. And if you would like to participate as an officer going through this training, you're more than welcome to. It's all, it ranges from use of firearms to OC spray to any other type of weapon that the officers, tasers, might be carrying at any time. So you're more than welcome, just give me a call and we'll arrange it for you to come in and join us. We are hosting for the region. We're gonna have other police departments coming in, doing the training over the course of the month, Bloomfield, Springfield, some KSP. And even though this is sponsored by Kentucky League of Cities, we're inviting the sheriff's office to come over and join us in the training during this time. This will help us with our insurance rates. It is, the Kentucky League of Cities are the underwriters, and they're also the ones who provide the video system for us to train with. You have any questions that I may answer?
So is the video being displayed on the computer or on the screen?
It's on the screen. The officers are filmed while it's being played on the screen, and then they're critiqued with their response to that. So it's gonna take up a whole wall of our training office.
Officer?
Sure.
You gonna be there?
Is it every day?
Weekdays, sir, just weekdays.
Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
Roots coming in, different, you have a schedule?
We don't, we have signup sheets out to the different departments, it's up to them. Hopefully, they'll come on time and not wait till the last week to do it, but what we should have in there, you won't.
Thank you.
But you all are more than welcome to come join us. You don't laugh at us, we won't laugh at you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Next one is our liquor license renewals, and I'm gonna let our City Attorney, Barbie Bryan, talk us through this. She's talked me through it twice already, it's still kinda confusing, but some changes in the licenses for this coming year.
Senate Bill 11 requires cities to synchronize their annual renewal dates with the state. The date for regular liquor licenses is April 1st, oh, excuse me, April, May 1st through April 30th. That's the actual date for the county of Nelson. So since we already have liquor licenses that were renewed last year until July the 1st, I have to prorate those liquor license renewals from July 1st until April 30th of 2018 for the regular liquor licenses. Then there's a category called batch licenses, which are your franchises, like Circle K and the Dollar General Store and Pizza Hut and Kroger and Walgreens and such. Their annual renewal date with the state is September 1st through August, I mean through, yeah, September 1st through August 31st. So for this year, on those renewal batches, I only have to go from July 1st until August 31st. That's only 61 days. So those will be renewed this year for 61 days, and then in August, I will send out a second renewal for a full year to get those caught up with the requirements of Senate Bill 11. So as you saw from the attachment, you can see the prorated renewal form that each individual's going to receive in big red letters showing the amount that they'll need to pay for the either 303 days or 61 days.
Or is there a?
Just keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going. One more. Yeah. So the first, the first example that I gave you was for Circle K, showing what the language will be in the letter, hopefully to explain their short renewal date as a batch, and then starting again in August for the full renewal going into 2018. Then the second letter shows renewals for annuals that go for the 303 days, and then, of course, the forms show what those amounts will be. It's a little complicated for this year only, and then starting next year, we'll have two renewal dates, one for regular and one for batch.
Do we need to change any ordinances?
No, sir, that was changed last year. As soon as Senate Bill 11 came out, it gave us until the year 2017. But we've already taken care of the ordinance, explaining batch in the definitions, and then its renewal dates as well. So ordinance-wise, we're okay.
And refer all questions to Ms. Bryan, if you'd like.
If this was for informational purposes, is there not action required?
No, no action required. I just thought that you're probably gonna get calls as soon as these renewals go out, and the date that I'll send them out is the May 15th date, and I'm sure as councilmen, you'll get calls from your constituents and from the license holders wondering what's going on. And so I'm wanting you to understand as well, to have that knowledge as well.
This is the state, this is not the city.
This is the state of Kentucky requiring all cities and all counties throughout the state of Kentucky to synchronize with the county's renewal dates.
Does all this money go to the state?
No, 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 this is all cities that we're talking here, all these prorated amounts.
You said the city, we're aligning the cities with the state?
Yes. Every city in the state of Kentucky has a different date. It's not April for everybody.
I know, I'm worried that.
Right, yeah.
But I'm just looking at our city license, it starts July 1st.
Well, we have to this year, Councilman Sheckels, because we had already renewed last year from July 1st to June 30th of this year. So I have to give them the benefit of the doubt as far as renewing for next year from just July 1st to April, to get us synchronized with April of next year. I couldn't start in April of this year.
Because they'd already paid.
Because they'd already paid through July 1st.
Yeah, they already do.
It's prorated.
Right, so it's renewals that begin this year and then synchronized, and that's why the batches are so short, because this is the year that their renewal date will come into effect, the August date.
That's right, because the prorated D, you have your like the half L.
Yes, sir.
Should be like $600.
Yes, exactly. Yes, sir. Exactly. So it's based on 303 days or 61 days. I didn't do it by months, I did it by actual days, I thought that was more realistic. Gotta get their monies worked in.
Okay, any other questions on this changes due to Senate Bill 11?
Thanks, sir.
Under unfinished business, I'll just say that I've sent out an email today that some, I've run into some of you all, told me some of the committee, you know, we had a recreation committee, and it was Councilman Coleman, and, excuse me.
Coleman.
Roland said he would be willing to, Coleman, I mean, I said Coleman, but I mean, Councilman Williams, and then Councilman Douglas said they would be willing to serve on that committee, and then Roland said he would be willing to be chair. And then I've talked to some others, sent that email out earlier today. But we may have, we may have too many on some committees, but I'm gonna try to honor everybody's request for the committees they'd like to be on. We might have some that don't have anybody and some that.
Just in case.
Do, so if you haven't, let me know about any changes you'd like to have from where you were assigned prior, let me know, either send me an email. And then, as I say, there might be a committee like Cemetery that may be short, I may have to strongarm somebody to serve on Cemetery Committee.
We'll need to update that in the board.
That's correct. And we can't do, we can't make it official until we ordain the new committee assignments through an ordinance, so if we don't get that done, let's say by, we have the next finance committee meeting due to the Recreation Department bids, the current finance committee would be the one that have to be.
It can be a municipal order.
Yeah.
Instead of an ordinance.
Right.
So it'll be, it doesn't need two readings, it can be done at one meeting.
So if you do have any other requests for committee assignments that I didn't identify in that email today, let me know, and I'll see what I can do about it.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I ask Barbie to clarify one thing on the last? You had stated that that actually synced up with a county date, that's, you meant to me to say the state date, is that correct?
The date applied to the county of Nelson, and that's April.
Okay.
So you might go to the county of Allen, and it might be June. So it would have to be whatever the state date is for our county.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. So the county has to align with the county?
Yes, sir.
That's what Senate Bill 11.
Yes, with the county. That's been assigned by the state.
Right. Anyone else have any other unfinished business we need to bring up? Okay, next order of business, new business, since I've changed positions, we now need to appoint a council person to serve on the BIDC, both the fiscal court and the city council have a representative, so I made a referral to appoint Councilman John Kelly to fill my expired term through June 30th of 2019. So I would ask for a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
And a motion, Dr. Second.
Second.
Dr. Second with Councilman Coleman. Any other discussion? All in favor, Mr. Speaker, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, John, for bringing the service.
Thank you for the confidence.
Okay, any, anyone else in the council would like to, anything to bring before the council? We got Cemetery Deeds, Stephen Campbell, and two gray sites, and OC over Bivens, one gray site, so most approved by acclamation.
You get some.
Okay, then, approved by acclamation then. Then, our anniversaries, Timothy Snee, with our Water Department, is now celebrating 10 years of the City of Barstown, the Department of Water, so we'll see Timothy out and out, congratulate him on his record of 10 years with the City Council. It's nice to have, especially the City of Barstown, it's nice to have people that are dedicated and stick with us through the 10 years.
Mr. Mayor, in case anybody's excited and wants to, we're having a cemetery meeting in the morning at 8:30. If you'd like to come.
I think I'm on that. Is that any place?
It's not a bad little meeting, we got a real.
I feel safe.
Three breaks. No, I was gonna say, I'll take it back.
I'm not gonna bother you, because I have another meeting down, I'll try to catch it.
It's gonna be great.
Is it still directly tomorrow?
Yeah, 8:30 AM.
Shekels.
We said that meeting.
Uh huh. Agenda, man.
Agenda, man.
A lot of emails this week.
Okay, Cemetery meets tomorrow at 8:30, something in the conference room.
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion for adjournment. For others, motion for Councilman Williams, second, second by Councilman Buckram. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, sir.
We are done.
Okay, I'll get you some.